Okay, everybody. Welcome to the July 14, 2020 Select Board Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. We did have, we're getting a little bit of a late start. We had some technical glitches. But as you've noticed, this is our first meeting back on camera, back in the meeting room, which is great. Ed and Brian and I, we decided we would distance ourselves so that we didn't have to wear masks. We thought that might be a little bit easier for folks at home to hear what we're saying. And everybody who's in the room is distanced as well. So it's really good to be back in person with everybody. I just want to say that. And does anyone have any announcements?
No, I'm good.
You're good, Brian?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
I just want to point out that some of the sponsor banners have been put out along Main Street for the 350th, and they look really great.
Look great.
Want to thank Garrett Berry and the DPW, as well as Anna Holhat and Bob Betzel, who worked really hard on getting those out there. They're actually working on some more, excuse me, this evening. So those do look really good, and of course, thanks to our sponsors. So I'm going to read the public forum policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statute of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Does anyone have any comments or anything for public forum?
Yes, Diana, I do.
Okay. So we're joined by some people, yes. Can people at home see this camera, John?
Yep.
They can. Okay. So we're joined by a couple of people remotely. One is Michael Cahill, so go ahead, Michael.
Yep. Mike Cahill, North Street. And Madam Chair, what I'd like to do, I've got a few questions that I'd like to ask the board. And what I'd like to do, because I don't expect you guys to answer these tonight at all, although perhaps you will in your discussion with finance committee, but I'd like to just submit these in writing to Marlene at some point of the meeting, and then you guys can do with them as you wish. So if I could have about five minutes just to ask these questions and play them on the table if you will.
Is there a reason you can't just submit them to Marlene?
And then we'd have them for...
Well, I think it's kind of helpful for the record, if you will, and for the general public to perhaps hear these. So if I could, it shouldn't take very long.
Okay.
I know you're running a little late, so. So what, if anything, is being done regarding the issue of our former town accountant, Justin Cole, after recently having been charged with stealing almost three quarters of a million dollars from several other towns that he was also the town accountant for? That's one question. As the Attorney General's investigation in Hoover, Hatfield, it's another question. Would we have a forensic audit done on our accounts payable records for the period that Justin was involved in Hatfield? Another question. Exactly how much money did we pay BSA and Justin Cole since we engaged him? Another question. Where do we stand with our fiscal '19 Roselli CPA audit? And is a draft available yet? Where do we stand with the implementation and conversion of Batar, which is the accounting system that Justin proposed, and his financial reporting functionality? Have you or any department ever received any accurate financial reports from this system over any financial period? And then you guys said that fiscal '19 is closed and audited. Did we produce and receive management financials using the Batar system for the year ending June of 2019? And then lastly, where do we stand with accounting for fiscal '20? So those are the questions that I'd like to leave for the board and the finance committee, at least those of government are there and listening. And at some point, it would be helpful, I think, if the community received answers to these questions. So I will send these to Marlene, and hopefully you guys take them under advisement and respond at some point.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
We have some minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 26, 2020, June 8, 2020, and June 16, 2020.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No. I had none.
I have none either. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, as we now can get into the posted business, topic one is the building inspector report.
I was supposed to be here. He submitted this proposed building fee schedule a few weeks ago. If you've had an opportunity to look that over.
I looked at it. I didn't have the old schedule, so I wasn't able to tell what the differences were.
Okay.
Is it something, I mean, should we wait and see if he comes later?
Yeah. Why don't we do that?
We're going to just put that aside.
Okay.
And we also, next topic is the town clerk. Hi, Lydia.
I wanted to just say we're looking into trying to do dog licenses online and marriage, death, and birth records online. I've been working with Sharon, actually Elaine has been working with Sharon, to set this all up. But in conjunction with that, the dog fees have been behind because of COVID, and we've got approximately 500 dogs in Hatfield. We still have 300 unlicensed dogs. So in conjunction with going online and advertising, I'd like to be able to send out one notice and have some sort of amnesty program that says, if you get your dog licensed by the end of the year, by December 31st, they'll be, we'll waive all the late fees and back fees.
Mike needs to mute.
Mike, can you mute your microphone and...
Again, just to mention, I couldn't hear Lydia at all, so just wanted to comment, and I'll mute my mic.
Okay. Go ahead.
So it's kind of like the IRS says, they'd rather get people on the tax rolls than punish them. So trying to get as many dogs registered as possible, and I thought kind of a one announcement about the online and about this amnesty program would hopefully work and get more dogs just in the system.
I mean, in fairness to residents, with the town hall being closed, it's been difficult.
Right.
So for the people at home who couldn't hear what Lydia's suggesting, or the people on, I'm sorry, on the Microsoft Teams meeting, Lydia's suggesting waiving the late fee for dog license renewals because of COVID, basically.
And any past due. I've got probably a handful.
And past due ones, in an effort to make sure we license as many dogs as possible. So, I mean, that makes perfect sense, and it has been hard for residents to get into the building at times.
And even getting their rabies updated, because to just get to the vet's office, sometimes they're three weeks out just to try to get an appointment, so.
I have no problem with it. It makes perfect sense. And certainly would urge residents watching this, if you haven't licensed your dog or re-licensed your dog, please do that. I did take care of my dog a couple of weeks ago. I think I squeaked in under the deadline there, but, you know, certainly, you know, do that. It's really important that those dogs are licensed. And then it ultimately helps if the dog's ever lost, they have the tag.
Well, that's why, I don't get why people don't license their dog, because if they do get out, or, you know, it's so easy to find them.
Right.
Not everybody has a chip reader.
And so is it, they can do it online now?
Not yet.
Not yet. So we're working on getting it online. Okay.
I just wanted to send out one notice about the online to all the dog owners and the delinquents and kind of put everything in one notice.
Will, if I may, will you be, once it's up and running and you're giving people enough time, is there still going to be some sort of a date that, you know, you got to do it by whatever?
December 31st.
Okay, by December 31st.
Yeah.
And will you be getting a payment and then turning around and mailing a tag? Is the payment enough? Because at that point, we have a record of it.
What the other towns are doing is the fee for, like, if your dog is spayed or neutered, it's $10. So online, it's $11. The other dollar covers the processing and the...
Mail the tag.
Mail the tag. Because the tag is the important part.
Yeah.
Right. And it's expensive. It's like 67 cents to mail it back, because it's what they call non-machinable mail, because it's bulky.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, fine with me.
That was easy. Thank you.
Can we, do we need to take a vote on that? Like, an official vote to waive those fees? Probably doesn't hurt, right?
It doesn't hurt anything.
How about a motion to...
I'll make a motion to waive the fees. Under the circumstances, I think that's a great job. I mean, great idea, and...
It's just fair. It's only fair.
Yep, second.
Okay, a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Just in case you needed a vote, you have a vote.
I have one. It's official.
And if you're listening, please register your dog.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Lydia. Okay, we have, we have in front of us a letter of resignation from Officer Mark Ruddock.
I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Officer Mark Ruddock from the Hatfield Police Department.
I'll second that, and I think we should send him a letter, thank you for serving the town of Hatfield.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So there's a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? And so now, it's actually, we have a couple of minutes before we actually caught up. Can we, do you think we could take up the solid waste management MOU? Marlene?
Yes, absolutely.
Did you want to speak to this, or, I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
And this is pretty much done annually. We've had this agreement for services with Franklin County for many years. So this is, I believe, just for the year. Just looking to make sure there was a date here. Yeah, July 1, 2020 through June 30 of 2021.
Okay. And this is pretty much in line with last year's contract?
Yes.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the Franklin County solid waste management and the town of Hatfield regarding hauling and disposal of sludge.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
No? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Excuse me. Okay, look at that.
Okay, we are right on track to have a 6:30 meeting with the Finance Committee, who, most of whom are joining us through Microsoft Meetings.
There's Daryl.
Hi, Daryl. Hi, Betsy. I know Sean was on and was going to be returning.
Hello, and welcome to everybody.
Good. Oh, there's Sean. There's Kim. Hi, Kim.
Hello.
Hello.
And...
And...
Is that it?
That is showing up as M at the bottom.
MC would be Michael Cahill. But I don't know who M is.
Meetings.
Oh, meetings, okay.
Okay.
So did you want to wait for Diane?
Diane?
She just got in and out a second ago.
Okay, maybe she's having some...
She should be getting right back on.
We'll give her a minute.
Yeah, now that we're caught up.
Okay. We could pause. We're going to pause for just a minute.
John's got an idea. I can tell.
Maybe for the new fiscal year.
Okay. Okay, so we are, at this point, we're going to start our meeting with the Finance Committee to review year-end transfers. Did you, did you guys want to take this and, Daryl?
Sure, we can start it. We'll work together. Marlene did all the work on it, so she can walk us, maybe she can start by walking through the first spreadsheet of year-end transfers.
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay, Marlene?
Yes, that's, that's fine. Be glad to. So there were, you know, several departments, not significant, you know, amounts of money here. So we're looking at, you know, transferring money in fire wages to fire expenses, council on aging wages, transfer money from council on wages, council on aging wages to council on aging expenses, the town clerk's wages were transferred. If you want me to read the amounts, I'll be glad to do that. Just realized. So the total amount we're transferring within departments or other departments to other line items is $41,381.80. That includes, you know, the fire department, council on aging, town clerk, elections, selectmen.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Marlene. Sorry.
Okay. We're transferring funds to the fire department expenses, council on aging expenses, town clerk's expenses, election expenses, to the selectmen's expense account, to town administrator and staff wages, technology budget inspection services wages, cemetery wages, veterans' expense, Medicare, and property liability insurance. I said there was a total of $41,381.80 in shortfalls for FY '20.
And in most cases, they're just going from, within the department's allocated budget, they're going just from that, maybe from one line item to another.
From salary to expenses or vice versa.
The big one actually is, half of that amount actually is the insurance.
I was just going to say, yeah, the health insurance was the biggest.
And a difficult one to budget for.
Right.
Right.
Which one?
Health insurance. It's not health insurance. We're transferring money from health insurance to property and general liability.
Right. But that's because that went out.
Diane, listen, is it possible for Marlene to use whatever speaker apparatus you're using? We can't hear her.
Yeah, just...
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. I'm going to, I'm going to turn it towards Marlene.
Within the computer itself.
So, hmm.
Can you put in a laptop?
Yep. If, Marlene, why don't you speak and see? I think turning it's going to help.
Okay. So we're, we're transferring $41,381.80 from various line items to the departments, I read, that have come up short, is fire department expenses, council on aging expenses, town clerk's expenses, election expenses, selectmen's expense, town administrator and staff wages, technology inspection services wages, cemetery wages, veterans' expense, Medicare, and property and liability insurance. And the largest cost here being on the property and liability insurance, and that's, yes, as Brian has said, half of that, $41,381, is the property and general liability for
And just for, for the Finance Committee's information, and also people at home, a lot of the other transfers, excuse me, are very small. I mean, some as small as $35, a few hundred dollars, some around $1,000, so.
We've got the spreadsheet in front of us. And the other thing that should be noted is that none of this includes the DPW that the DPW will talk about after this, so.
Yeah. I just would like to say though, I'd just like to mention the inspection ser...
Tell me about the transfer of money from the town administrator professional services to wages. Was that the secretarial way?
Yes, it is.
It is.
It is. And I'd just like to...
But that's what we included in our budget.
Yes.
What, yes, for the new fiscal year?
Yes.
Yeah. I'd also like to mention that the same, same error occurred with inspection services wages, the building commissioner. Apparently, his, his hours were increased a couple of years ago, and that line item has not been funded sufficiently to cover those hours.
Okay, thank you.
So we need to look at that for, we'll have the same problem this current year, fiscal year.
21, yeah.
Right.
Well, if we have another town meeting this fall, we can correct it then, or attempt to correct it then.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Any, do, any of you...
Are there any questions by the Finance Committee on any of these transfers?
No, I don't have any.
Kim? Or Sean?
No.
Nope, I don't have any.
So let me just check here with our board. Ed, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions on that.
Brian?
No, ma'am. All set.
Okay, so we're all set at our end as well.
So I can't remember how we do this. We have to have two separate motions from each committee, or...
I would think so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to propose the transfer of $41,381.80 from various departments as listed on the spreadsheet to cover end-of-year overruns.
I'll second that. I'll make that move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to approve the town of Hatfield end-of-year transfers for fiscal year 2020 as presented.
Second that.
So a motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Marlene, and very much, and thank you, Finance Committee.
So I think we want to address the DPW.
Diana, before you go, the next thing that Marlene sent to us was the DPW end-of-year. This is something that's different. I talked to Marlene about it. Marlene, you could talk about it, that we don't need to make, they can, you don't need to make year-end transfers, they can do these internally. Do you want to explain that to everyone, Marlene?
Yes. Based on my conversation with the town accountant, the deficits that exist in various budgets under the Department of Public Works, there are also surpluses in other line items under the Department of Public Works. And the accountant had said, because it's all within the Department of Public Works, it does not require a vote to transfer monies from...
Even though other departments were within their departments?
Well, and that's what I had explained, and, you know, because every, every budget is a separate budget.
Right.
Even though these are within the DPW, we have always voted. But I said to her...
So if you look at the spreadsheet, there are some deficits.
Right.
Marlene, I'm, again, sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
$14,746 in deficits.
Marlene, why don't you roll closer, and I'll mask up.
Anybody else hear that? Because I didn't.
Yep, Marlene's coming a little close.
Marlene's going to, why don't we just bring this down to her?
Okay.
Do you want me to disconnect the line?
Sorry.
That's all right.
We'll get it.
So there's $14,746 in deficits within the DPW. DPW admin and facilities maintenance, and the other is transfer station and cemetery. Cemetery, DPW admin, they're, they're small amounts. The facilities maintenance, we did anticipate over an overrun, because we are leasing space to store historical artifacts, and we're also leasing space at the church for the council on aging. So I was proposing if, if, if we, you know, want, if the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee would like to vote, I was proposing that we use the $10,989 from the tree wardens' line and $3,757 of the $31,256 that's available in highway. And that will cover the deficit.
So, if I may, so I guess the only question I have, by the way, I have no problem doing that. But I guess my question is, didn't we just say to start this that we don't need to vote on that? If it's within their...
Right. According to the accountant, it is not necessary.
Well, and this, this brings me back to my many years on the school committee. The school committee is, as, as all of you guys know, and the Finance Committee and everybody here in this room, they get their budget of whatever it is, we'll just round up and say it's $5 million a year. If they transfer something from operations to teachers, to whatever, the school committee never had to vote on that.
Right.
It's, once the money's there and it's appropriated, then it's basically their money to spend how they want.
Right.
So, Mike, I guess, so I guess my question would be, though, why the DPW and not every other department?
Well, the school departments are still...
I mean, the school...
I was going to say, they don't have separate budget, yeah.
But what I'm, you know, but what I'm saying is, I mean, I know it's the whole checks and balances thing, and by the way, the superintendent always brought those transfers before the school committee in order to make sure we were aware of them. But I'm just, I'm not sure why it's all of one and not other.
Why do we have to, for fire department, we have to approve it?
And that was my same question.
So I, I guess I don't think that'll be answered tonight, but I just wanted to say it out loud, like, we should ask the accountant, what's the deal?
We've always followed the statute.
Right.
If I may, does it make sense that we come up with some sort of motion just to cover our...
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think so.
Nothing wrong with voting it.
There isn't. Yeah. There isn't.
You know, I mean, that way, if somehow it comes back that we should have done it, I mean, we've always done these transfers this way in the past, and I'm with you, Brian, that why would the DPW be different than the fire department or the police department or the town administrator? It doesn't make sense to me, so.
So let's vote it for this year and get some clarification before next year.
Yeah, I just didn't have time to do that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I'll make a motion to approve the transfers that Marlene suggested, because I don't remember what they were, to cover the deficit of...
$14,000.
$14,000, say it again.
$746.
$746.
I'm sorry, does that include the pending expenses?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So why are you stringing $14,000 and I'm looking at $8,000?
Well, is it the $6,634 plus the $7,406 and the $542?
Oh, right. That's right. You're right, Daryl. Yeah, that's right. At the top of that page, yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't do the math.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Three probably look like they are worth $1,000.
Right. So we'll still have money within that $55,000.
Yeah, go ahead, Betsy.
My question is, why, if we have anticipated expenses and payroll?
Why do we have what?
I'm a little confused about that also.
Estimated. Where do we see that?
Betsy broke up. I didn't hear the question.
I assume payroll expenses generally only go into overtime when we're dealing with stipend ice, and that salary is listed as stipend ice. So what is this payroll that we're paying?
Betsy, are you referring to the payroll in the pending expenses column?
Yes.
Right. So that's the payroll that remain, the last payroll for fiscal year 20.
So why wouldn't we keep that with all the other departments?
Those are different, and that's outside of what we're talking about, isn't it? Those pending ones are...
Those pending, so that $55,000 is, will be available to cover those pending expenses. They are either currently submitted on a warrant or will be on a warrant.
And there's money to cover them.
There is.
They're, they're, they're different. They're outside of what we're talking about.
Correct.
Okay.
What is outside of what we're talking about?
The pending expenses.
Right. We have, we have accounted for those.
But is...
They're accounted for. We're just here to discuss the trans, we're just here to discuss the transfers.
There's money, payroll to pay for that. It's something we don't normally see.
Right.
For year-end transfers. Does that... For year-end transfers. Does that make sense, Betsy?
It's sort of like extra info on here, right? It doesn't have to be on here. Is that correct?
It is, it's just there.
It's like extra information, it has nothing to do with the transfers.
Those are costs that we knew we needed to cover.
We know they're coming, right.
They're coming, and there's money to cover them.
Right.
Right, and it's the same thing with the snow and ice thing. We will not, that on the right-hand side of that spreadsheet, we will not have a deficit of forty-one thousand dollars. The ninety-three thousand that we approved at town meeting should have, should take care of all our snow and ice deficit. So that, whatever, that was incorrect on this. Right, Marlene?
Yes.
So, anyway, so I think the Selectmen have a motion for the DPW transfers.
For the fourteen, seven forty-six. Did I get the number right?
Right.
Wow, I finally remembered, yep.
I just, okay, I'll second that. I just have a question. I'm trying to understand this. I'm trying to fully understand this. If, and in my mind, if the School Committee within themselves can transfer in their department because they have that money approved, if the DPW can transfer within their department because they have the money approved, what's the difference between the police department or the fire department being able to do that?
Brian, can you translate, please?
I'm sorry, so he's asking, he's asking what we were talking about before. That the school department has the ability to transfer within their budget without going through this. It appears the DPW does too. We're gonna take the motion as a formality, but why don't other departments? So, which we were, we, yeah, it's a good point. We're gonna, I think the decision was made to take an actual action on these DPW transfers tonight, even though we may not need to, but get some clarification before next year's transfers.
Yep.
And the other thing I want to point out, so that people at home are really clear on this, we're saying that there's a fourteen thousand dollar deficit, but it, overall in the DPW, there is not a deficit.
That's right.
It's just, it's itemized by tree department and all kinds of other things, and there's just movement within the DPW lines. But the budget itself has not been overspent.
Right.
That's just really important for people to understand at home.
And that's, I would say that's actually out of a couple million dollars, or however big that budget is, to only be off, you know, from a line item perspective, fourteen thousand dollars is pretty good.
Right.
Yeah, we did well.
Right.
And, and as Marlene and I pointed out when we spoke earlier today, none of this, you know, we have forty thousand dollars left in finance reserve that we haven't even touched, that will all flow back to next year's free cash, so.
Which basically means department heads did a really good job of working within their budgets.
Absolutely.
So we commend them for that.
All right, I think the Selectmen have a-
Yeah, we have a motion.
We do, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Ed? No, you're good. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Finance Committee, someone want to make a motion?
Guess not.
Nobody. I'll move to make, I'll move to make the transfers as indicated. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second it.
I hear a second. Any, any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Diana, I don't know, we had one other thing that we were hoping to discuss tonight, and, or at least start the discussion about the loan information and stuff like that. I know Sharon sent us an email, and you guys have copies.
Right, we were, I was just handed this information just now, but Sharon is here, so she can join us. I think.
So perhaps we could just have an initial discussion. We don't have to make any decisions, but kind of get the ball rolling, so to speak.
Okay. Great. Sharon, do you want to come up to the mic?
Sharon, do you want to walk us through the stuff you sent, the loans?
Edwina's here too.
Edwina's here too.
Edwina.
Should we move the laptop over there so that-
I think they could come closer.
I don't know, I'm pretty loud.
No. Okay, everybody in the public is on camera, so. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you guys hear me?
We don't even need the mouse. There you go.
Not really well.
Okay, we're moving it closer. Come closer. Oh, now I'm really close.
We're all gonna be really happy when this Zoom thing is done with.
Got that right.
We're happy that some of us are in the room together, so that's a help. So we're just coming closer, so I'm gonna wait a sec, because we're in each other's face all the time. Good for us. All right, so I asked, did all four of you get the, and Betsy, I don't see you anymore, but did you get this?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody got the email. So Edwina and I put together a chart of all the loans that we have currently through FY twenty-one into FY twenty-two, and you can see at the end how many years are left and the percentage of the interest currently through there. So we can go through all of them if you want, or I can just highlight the most important ones, whatever's better for you guys.
Why don't you highlight the most important?
Okay, so for FY twenty-two, go ahead, Brian.
I was just, I was simply gonna ask what determines what's the most important, what's coming off first?
Exactly.
Okay.
So that's where I was gonna go.
So years one, so we're gonna hit years, what's coming off in a year?
So we have some coming off in FY twenty-two, so they have zero, so on the bottom of the first page, there's fifty-two thousand, six hundred coming off in FY twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, next July.
Per year.
Next July, all of that will be gone.
Per year, is that correct? Paid off?
Paid off.
Okay.
In FY twenty, go ahead, Darryl.
Sorry, so, so you're looking at what's highlighted in green, the fifty-two, six hundred comes off?
Exactly, that section. So the West Street Water Main, the water transmission line, water sand filters, and rotating biological contractor, I don't know what that is, but, number two.
Yeah.
So those four will come off in FY twenty-two, which is what we pay next July, okay? Then I have highlighted a few others up in the top category. So those are hundreds are coming off. We're not quite there, but it's another forty thousand dollars, or show them.
And which ones are the?
Purple.
Those will be the grit conveyor, the fire tanker truck, the sewer, North Street, Phase Two, and finally garage repair.
Phase one, right?
Okay.
Yes. So those ones will come off in twenty-three. So those were the ones that I kind of highlighted as the most important to talk about first off, because those will be coming off. Oh, the second part of this is that we had obviously seen what Mike Cahill had put in the paper, and those kind of the conversation about refinancing. So Edwina had a conversation with Margaret, who's our loan advisor, and it kind of goes back to the same conversation that we've already had, that we're not really in the place to be refinancing right now, because we don't have a strong enough continuous audit retrail that's on time and actual and good, has good reports. We've gotten one. We're hopefully going to have another one this fall, so that when we go into next year, beating the beginning of FY twenty-two, that may be the conversation time of when we could, in particularly combine the parts that in yellow that says authorize new issue, Town Hall Phase Two, the COA kitchen and ramp, and then at that point, we will hopefully already have the one-point-six million for Route Five, is it sewer or water sewer?
Water sewer.
Infrastructure. So that would be there, so that would be something that maybe we could group together. But their advice at this time is that we don't have anything else that we can take and kind of refinance as asked. Did I miss anything, Edwina?
No.
But we are taking the steps to get there, which is important for townspeople to hear, and Michael, who, I know this is something that is important to him, but we have to get there first, and we are doing the things.
We have made progress. I mean, we got a really good loan rate, interest rate for our big loan at a point-eight-six interest rate, and we can get much better than that.
That's pretty good.
So, no complaints there, but that's, because we're doing our due diligence, and we're getting there. We're just unfortunately, as Edwina always says to me, you can't go and refinance your house if you don't have-
Got to establish a credit rating.
Exactly, same thing.
You've gotta get your ducks in a row first, and we're not quite there yet. You were gonna add something, though.
Well, it's important too, I mean, we can borrow money, but we have to have the means to pay it back, too. And we are restricted. Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven and Eight, really is the structure of what municipalities can borrow for author, loan authorization.
What we can combine and how we can do that.
Okay.
I think needless to say, that it's not as, quite as easy as it appears to be.
Exactly.
And Diana's right. We are and we have been taking strides to do so, but we, it takes time, and it takes good credit, and it, you know, it just, it takes time.
You have to also make sure you're doing your reporting on time. We have to have our audits done on time.
Yeah.
All sorts of things have to be lined up, so there is a process, and we're not, we're not ready yet. I mean, we haven't, like in the last five years, been able to meet those deadlines.
Right.
So.
But those days are behind us.
Those days are behind us.
We have, we have improved, and things are getting better, but I don't-
We're not quite there yet.
We're not quite there. I think the other important thing for townspeople is that we've always been able to pay our bills. We've always been collecting our revenues, we've always been paying our bills, and now we're just going to be able to have all that set up in a way that the auditors and the accountants and everybody else now sees, sees a historical positive way ahead, or that we've been a positive way ahead for us, so. So thank you for investigating, and thank you for bringing it up, so people know that we're actually,
Right.
you know, listening and looking into things, and we've done that.
Right. Does anybody in the Finance Committee have any questions on any of this?
This is-
Uh, no, I don't have any.
I just want to say, this is really helpful. I'm gonna keep this and refer back to this, because the way that it's laid out is really helpful.
I also emailed it to you guys, so you can have it electronically.
Thank you.
Yep.
This comes in really handy too at budget season for capital planning.
Exactly.
This is very important.
This is a really great document.
It'll be updated by then, but, next time, but, yeah, great. Nice, nice job, ladies.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. Did you have anything else?
Darryl, Darryl and the work, Diana, it's Mike Cahill.
Diana, this is my question.
Yeah, for Sharon and Edwina. You know, I appreciate, you know, what you've done, and I'm hoping, could you send me a copy of that schedule as well, when you get a chance? I hear what you're saying, and I guess the question I have is, we've been working hand-in-hand with the Department of Revenue for the last several years, given our very problematic accounting situation. And so they've been partnering with us, so to speak, through this challenge. We've also been working with Roselli.
Is there a question in there?
Because our eyes, and, you know, we're catching up, so, all of that being said, plus the fact that you said we were able to get this wonderful interest rate on the, I don't know what it was, you just mentioned, some, again, borrowing that we have just entertained. So I guess my question is, if you were able to get that kind of really good interest rate with the most recent borrowing, why would our, why would that be an issue? Why was our credit issue with the most recent borrowing?
Because if you were gonna go to the next step, Michael, you would have to go out and go get a new rating, a official, not just a one-time, you'd have to go to bond counsel and get a new rating, and everyone is advising us, this is not the time to do that, based on the fact that we don't have the audits and the track record. We can work with Roselli, we can work with DOR, but you need to be consistent and have a good couple of reports to say, listen, yes, they were working on it, but they finally made that progress. So we're just not at that time, but yes, it's great, we're getting a good rate, but it's not time to, you know, there's not also a lot else we can combine because of the way the law states.
So would it be possible to-
Thanks, Sharon.
Just do a what-if. So what if we had a better credit thing?
I'm gonna snap.
Michael.
What is the overall interest rate, and if we were to refinance all of our debt, you know, what would we say?
We can't do that.
Michael, Michael, Michael. Michael.
So do as quickly as we can through the audit process, and I'm-
Michael, 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 Michael.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so we understand clearly where you stand on this, and I hope you understand that the town is taking all the proactive steps it can to get to that point. So you can keep asking the questions, but the answers are going to be the same. So this is where we are. We appreciate Sharon and Edwina laying this out for us, looking into this, and we will keep charting the positive course that we are, and get to the point where we can, can work on this in a more effective way as soon as possible.
Right?
Right.
Okay.
All right, Diana?
Yep.
I guess, I just want to make sure nobody in the Finance Committee has any other questions, because then I think you can be done with us.
I don't.
Okay, Kim, Diane, Sean, are you all set?
I think I'm all set.
I'm not, but I'm all set.
And Betsy, I think we lost Betsy, because she-
She just flashed.
Couldn't hear anybody anyway, so, I guess.
I'm gonna watch the meeting on YouTube. I couldn't hear what people were saying.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. This is very difficult, so.
If you have any questions, let me know, Betsy, okay? About the chart.
Yeah, and I would suggest, Sharon, if it's okay with you, hopefully later on in the summer, maybe early fall, when Finance Committee gets together, we'll have you and Edwina come in, and we can kind of talk about this. Hopefully, we'll be at a point where we could all meet in the same room, and maybe have to keep distance, but it'll make this a whole lot easier to have a, excuse me, a discussion about, so.
Excellent. Finance Committee, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As always.
Thank you, Selectmen. Thank you, Edwina and Sharon. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye.
See ya.
Thank you.
Thanks, Edwina. Thank you, Sharon.
I'm sure Michael will probably stay on. So, our next agenda item is to discuss the Smith Academy Pavilion Architectural Services Agreement.
Is that Rich Abbott under there?
Hi, Rich. Rich, would you like to come up to the microphone?
Sure.
Bobby and Ann are-
We had too many people in here.
Oh, is that what was going on?
I had asked them to wait outside. We had too many people.
So we're gonna wait for two more folks to join us.
Oh, I was wondering why they left. I get it. I totally understand.
Trying to make sure, yeah.
Yep. So, Marlene? Kick them out.
I did. Sorry, guys.
So we're joined by Rich Abbott from Preservation.
Open Space.
Open Space, excuse me, and Anna Holhut and Bobby Betzel from the Three-Fiftieth Committee. We did have a meeting, was that earlier, no, late last week.
Thursday.
Late last week, to talk about the contract for the architectural firm for, this is regarding the pavilion that's gonna be at Smith Academy Park, and we had some questions about the timing of it. So we wanted to have both Rich and some Three-Fiftieth folks come back in to discuss that, because obviously, we have this change to our timeframe. So, did you want to begin, Rich?
Sure. So, yeah, we did not know about the Three-Fiftieth Committee's request until last Friday, when Marlene emailed me, so it was a surprise. So, you know, we've had this scheduled since last fall, hope, go ahead.
Maybe I should just give a little background. So obviously, the pavilion is gonna go in the same location where our big birthday cake is, and because of everything being delayed, because of the pandemic, ideally, the Three-Fiftieth Committee would like the birthday cake to stay through the parade, which has been postponed to the end of May. So that would postpone the building of the pavilion a bit. So that's why you're here, okay?
So we had this sort of schedule established since last fall, when the, when the cake went up, and, you know, the town meeting, we sort of reiterated our schedule here. Right after town meeting, the following week, we've met with Laura Fitch, who's our architect, to get things rolling for the- get things rolling for this fall. You know, again, have timelines set up and she's getting some of the preliminary stuff. She gets together for coming up with the bid. So, you know, we've got momentum here. We've been on this project for 10 years from the start of talking with the trustees to get the land transferred over, working through the landscaping renovation in the last couple of years, the pavilion. So, you know, we would like to get it done. We also have a concern of cost. You know, we've got an amount budget that was approved at town meeting and, you know, this money, this budgeted money is from a budget Laura Fitch did January of 2019. So we've got some concerns in terms of cost. We don't think putting it off another, whatever works out, seven, eight months, whatever you is going to make it any cheaper. And so we're already sort of concerned about that. And I guess the final point is, you know, I happen to think that a pavilion in the park next year when the parade happens would be a nice attraction, you know, it'd be a good focal point. So that's pretty much, I think, our Open Space Committee's stance on that.
Did Bobby, do you want to? Okay, does he need to go to the mic, John?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh. Put musical chairs. So, yeah, I mean, from the 350th side and Bobby Betzel, 350th Committee, unfortunately, Ed couldn't be here, but I know. So the 350th at our, trying to think what it was, two meetings ago, our May meeting, discussed the cake and the timing and all that because of some other plans that we'd had. And so at that point, that's when we took the vote in the letter that was sent to the Board of Selectmen, sent to Marlene, requesting the extension of keeping it there through the parade. Obviously, none of us expected or were planning on things getting delayed and pushed back as they have. That's kind of been the center point or focal point of all of our celebration that's happened, the startup at Luminarium and the lighting, carrying into really, it's kind of been the one thing that's been nice, fortunately, continuous, you know, when we had to kind of put everything on halt with COVID and that was having that there. The incorporation day, which went virtual, was was out in front of it. You know, the parade, again, kind of being the backdrop for for the parade and everything coming through the center of town was the plan. And then, as Rich said, you know, originally, the plan was that here, September, October, was the plan to remove it and allow time for the construction, you know, because really the only thing at that point would have been the fireworks and Luminarium. Once the parade got moved back, that was what kind of prompted us to to put this request out there, continuing along with things being delayed. So that's kind of where we're at. You know, we certainly would would like to have it remain there. The parade actually coincides with the last day that the town is 350. So we actually are managing to keep the entire 350th celebration within 350th year, which is which is actually a nice irony in a way. And then the plan would be to haul it out pretty much immediately after that. And actually had some discussion today about potentially where it's going. We've had discussions with Whately. They are still interested in it and the timing actually would work well for them in that they're doing instead of a year long, they're doing a kind of a one week and a half, 10 day deal, which is at the end of June. So the timeline would work well for them to bring it in right away and have it be there right for their celebration.
Not have to be stored.
Yes, and not have to store it and go through that. So that's kind of where we're at on all that in terms of the plans. And, you know, we've already had numerous people approach us as far as, you know, we've tried to kind of continuously update the cake. You know, we had the holiday theme with the wreaths and the tree on top for Luminarium. We've had the flags and the patriotic for Memorial Day. We're kind of still in that theme. We've had people approach us about for the end of the summer and into the harvest season, going to a harvest theme and then going back into a winter holiday theme again. So we've kind of got we've got momentum with that side of things. People are kind of, again, united around it. It's been the one one thing that's been the staying point for us through all of this and kind of, I guess, the symbol that, hey, the 350th is still here and we are moving forward. So certainly can can take any questions along those lines.
Understood.
Yeah, no, thank you. I guess I have a question, but it's for Rich. I don't I don't know how you guys want to do it. So.
John, if we put a mic in between us, does it work?
Yeah. Oh, careful your glasses. So, Rich, what is the so anyways, let me start by saying this is just unprecedented. The circumstances are unprecedented. So what is the if if the architect knows or if you guys know yet, what would be kind of the estimate for the building? How long does it take approximately? I'm not going to hold you to it. I guess so we have an idea.
Right. I think the bid would have sort of a 90-day window upon commencement to finish within 90 days.
So basically, three months to build the pavilion and be out of there and everything is good to go. And that was originally going to start this fall. The idea was to start this fall?
Right.
Originally.
Yeah. So, you know, but we're back a month because of town meeting and all that. So but at this point, December 31st would be like we'd expect it to be done.
Okay.
Or before.
Right. Okay. Right. Weather could have, who knows, played a could have, yeah, all that stuff.
You know, that goes.
Yeah.
It's 2020. Who knows now?
Yeah, well, right.
Well, that's the other part of this is it's, you know, there it's likely that you could even experience delays, even if we decided to move forward with it.
Right. I mean.
So so we could end up having no pavilion and no cake.
Well, not necessarily because, you know, if we put out the bid and things go south pretty quickly, you know, I don't know what the logistics are in terms of having to dismantle that. But, you know, if it was weighted to if the decision was to go ahead with the construction, dismantling wouldn't have to happen until we actually have.
Right. Yeah.
A contract.
Yeah. But but we would need a way for I think we would need a collective way forward, whatever that is, in advance of that, versus the we're going to do it and then something may may fall apart.
I mean, you know, same thing with the parade. I mean, we're assuming the parade will be allowed next year.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
There's lots, so many uncertainties.
You know, you know, it's just two organizations that have put so much work and effort into everything that they do. And you're right, the Open Space, I know we went back and we got that original grant, I don't know how many years ago that was, right, to do what we've done thus far. And then this was phase two, because that's how we do things in town.
Carrie's on here. Do you want to speak?
So 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 I I mean, I'm really personally, I really think that the while the pavilion's going to be beautiful and it's going to be welcoming, for me, I just think that the cake is part of the whole 350th celebration that we're that we're working towards. And I'd be more apt to delay the construction of the pavilion, quite honestly, and have the cake there to wrap up all the festivities on the last day of the 350th year, et cetera, which I hope you and the Open Space Committee take as no reflection on all the work and efforts that everybody's put in. I think that if there is a change in the funding, you know, once the bid goes out, I think people in town would would certainly understand that it was delayed because the 350th was delayed.
Because we're going to miss a whole cycle if that happens.
Yeah.
I mean, realistically, if we're looking at a June construction, when do we go out and bid? January?
January.
February? If we go beyond our budget, we can't go back to CPA. So what do we do? We have another whole other year?
Right.
Okay.
Well, we have a town meeting in May.
350th.
Right.
The 350th wants the cake to stay. You guys are concerned because of the money. So I think if if we move forward with saying we want the cake to stay and it built after, we have to be able to support additional funding because I think you're going to be seeing another 5% to 10% increase. So I think the biggest issue for for these guys is saying, where are we going to get the money? So we have to if we can come up with a way to ensure them that the funding would be there, that would resolve one issue. The other issue is, I know you've been working on it for 10 years. You want to get it done. I understand that. But I also understand the 350th saying it's important for the cake to be there for the 350th. So maybe the real issue here is the funding. Maybe that's the bottom line. So we can just find a way to guarantee that if we go forward this way, there's going to be money for them. And maybe that would resolve and make both sides happy. I don't know if that will happen, but that's just the way I'm seeing it.
So it looks like we have a question.
Yeah, so Carrie's on. She's listening as the COVID-19 coordinator.
Yes.
So her comment, if you can get her on, that she would say it, but she.
Oh, Carrie, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes. So Carrie.
My general?
I don't know if people at home heard this. Carrie Flaherty is on with a comment as the COVID coordinator about all of this. So go ahead, Carrie.
My only comment is is that for everybody to consider is that as much as I I mean, I support either direction, but having the cake stay where it is and not having the pavilion set up in this current situation with COVID going on is great is a great way for us not to have to police that as a gathering site. With the cake there, people aren't gathering. We put a pavilion in there, we're going to have to keep it closed down and rope it off because people are not going to be able to gather in the center of town and for it to be used the way that it's supposed to be used in the current situation until phases change. So to leave the cake is going to help all of us out as a town to not have to have gatherings that we really can't be having.
Okay.
Just for that to be taken into consideration. I mean, funding it, yeah, everybody should realize that we'd have to go up that 5% or 10% possibly. And I think everybody as a town would support that. Anyways, I can't I don't know why we wouldn't do that. I mean, granted, anything can change, but from a COVID standpoint, I think it's safer to leave the cake and let it stay.
Okay.
That's all. Sorry.
Thanks. Thanks.
Never thought of it.
Just just to put my two cents in, you know, I think everybody's really excited and looking forward to the park being absolutely completed and having that beautiful pavilion. Obviously, you know, I'm on the 350th Committee. We've been working for years as well towards our goal. And I guess I feel like townspeople are going to be able to enjoy that pavilion forever. But we have one shot with this cake and this parade, you know, once every 350 years that we get to do this. So, you know, in my opinion, it's a it's a small delay in the scheme of things. We will make every effort. I think that you have the assurances, I think, based on what I'm hearing from Brian and Ed, that we'll do all that we can to make sure that the financial piece of this is taken care of when when that needs to happen. But I think I think people have really come to love that cake. And I think, Bobby, you put it really nicely when you said that the cake has continued to be there when everything else has sort of felt like it was falling apart. And I think I think it's important to keep it there. So I'm certainly leaning towards keeping the cake until getting as soon as possible getting it out of there, getting the bid process started early next year so that we're ready to go.
As far as on the funding side, I think, you know, a couple things, you know, the timing with the if if things are, I guess, under or over budget, you know, going in January versus going now, if it's over budget, you're on the time same timeframe because it could be over budget already. You know, so if that's the case, whether it's in January, I think that part's less of it. The 5% to 10% or whatever it could be is absolutely real, you know, and there's no question about that. And I know, you know, we talked and I know, Rich, you and I haven't had a chance to talk here in the last day and a half since this kind of night came up. But, you know, I think the two things, one, obviously, again, none of us expected the pandemic. And if that didn't happen, then we were fully prepared. It was going to be gone. I think the second part is to keep in mind that, you know, had the grant come through and you were up against the funding deadline, we wouldn't even be having this discussion because we 350th wouldn't even have brought that forward.
Well, right.
Yeah, and.
It would have been up.
Yeah, absolutely. So it would have been there would have been no question about it and that and stuff. I think the other thing also that's there, and I know, again, you and I haven't had a chance to talk, but in talking with Bob a little bit, I know he said you've been in discussion as far as some potential materials, discounts and other things along those lines. And.
Right.
Any fundraising would come off of the existing price to therefore reduce and and that side of things. I think the other thing that is a potential, and by no means can I speak for the entire 11-member 350th Committee, but there is we've been looking at some of our finances and budget. There's a possibility we may have some funds remaining from the 350th from the donation. We've been very fortunate. The business community, the public has has really stepped up and supported. And thankfully, we hit before COVID. So there's also a possibility that through some of that, that we may actually be able to offset, you know, thinking of, you know, a total project of right now, I think it's like 90,000 is what was in there. A 5% or 10% is a number that I think, again, I can't commit for the board.
Right.
For our committee, but it's within the financial realm of what we're forecasting for our budget where we could offset without even having to go to any additional funds in the town. And and I think it would be a nice transition.
Nice touch.
Yeah, kind of the handoff.
I was thinking that, but I wasn't going to bring it up because I'm not on the 350th Committee.
I know the financial picture that we're in right now. So.
And and it's important to note that we might not only be able to do it, but willing to do it.
Absolutely.
Because we would appreciate that extension of time.
And I think the other part of it is as far as potentially, and again, the business, I don't know what I call it, the business.
Miss the fundraiser here.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the business scene in all reality, I mean, has drastically changed in the last six months.
Well, that's what R.K. Miles sort of made a commitment, but they weren't giving us number because it was a discount number. Well.
Yes.
They haven't returned my calls in June.
Well, and what I was going to kind of say along those lines also, though, is, you know, we've forged some very good and strong relationships with a lot of the businesses in town. And R.K. Miles being one of them, you know, working direct with with Joe. Again, I can't speak for them, but I know they've been phenomenal with everything that we've done. And, you know, we would be more than willing to assist with any and all relationships or any at all otherwise that we can, you know, as a show of thanks for kind of helping out.
If I'm hearing everyone's support, I don't think we have much concern. We're going to get the money.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we're I mean, you guys have taken it this far. We'll make sure we will get you over the finish line.
We will be beyond the CPA's standpoint. And that's sort of traditionally been a source.
And and we will very much appreciate the extension and allowing us to continue this celebration under these difficult circumstances the best we can.
And I will say, as far as the timeline, you know, with the Memorial Day next year, that weekend, at least to this point, our Parade Committee has said this is our last shot. They planned a parade once, they're planning it a second time.
Right.
And if it doesn't go this time, then.
Right.
Then the plug is pulled. So.
If for some reason we're having setbacks with COVID or whatever, oh, God, I hate to even say those words. But.
Yeah. You know, so I think as far as a timeline and putting things in place and wherever it's going, whether it be to another town or to a storage or elsewhere, you know, we can have those plans in place for whether it be the weekend after or whatever.
I was going to say, I think a big part of this commitment to to Open Space needs to be getting that down as soon as possible. Okay.
Everybody's happy?
I know. Not really.
You know, honestly, though, the collaborative spirit is kind of cool. You know what I mean? Everybody's just been so affected by by COVID. And it's put it's pushed things out. It's delayed things. And I think everybody sort of has an understanding of the other person's situation. So if we we and the town included, not just Open Space and 350th, excuse me, the town just continues to have this type of dialogue and collaboration and understand what other groups are going through and help each other out. I mean, you know, probably sounds a little corny, but I mean, we're all in this together, right? So we might as well work together and and get the 350th cake, have the parade, get that pavilion, get that cake out of there after Memorial Day as soon as we can so that, you know, Open Space can start. We'll start the bidding in the winter. You know, we'll help with funding different things and funding sources. I mean, it's just, you know.
Really, at the end of the day, we all win. We all win with this, you know, taking this avenue. Because really and truly, that cake has become really symbolic of something really positive during a pretty negative time. So. And we're lucky that it may work out that Whately can take it and the timeframe would be just totally perfect.
Yeah, that just kind of the timeframe, because we didn't know what's going on in that. They asked again.
Seeing on the cake.
Yeah, I got a text this morning saying we are still interested. And I said, well, I'm not sure what the timeframe is going to be. So this is a possibility. I'm not sure what the timeframe is going to be, so this is a possibility, but I'll let you know more, you know, in the next couple of days.
If I may also, you know, while we're on that topic, though, Bobby, I think whether it's Whately or however you guys decide to, after May, wherever the cake's going, I think we collectively, and I'm sure Rich and his committee would be interested in this, too, we're going to need a commitment of, okay, you're getting it, and you need to have it out of here by whatever, June 15th or June 30th. You know, we need a deadline. It's not like you're taking, come get it, you know? Okay, I just, so...
It's going to go one way or...
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I wanted to say.
That has to be a real...
And we need a commitment for everybody that's involved with the next part of this.
That has to be a really solid commitment to Open Space, that it's gone right away.
If it's set up in a farm field somewhere, I mean...
That would look nice, too.
I thank both your committees for all you do for the town. I have to, I don't think people get enough of appreciation for the time and effort they put on things, so I want to say thank you anyway.
Agreed.
We gave you a shout out earlier on the banners, both of you, thanking you for that.
Getting them tied down now, so we won't be losing any more of these nice windstorms.
Oh. So, I assume we do not take action on this now because the timeframe will be off.
What I would, I'll talk to Marlene. What I would like to do is, Laura sort of got a heads up. We don't know where we're going with this. I'm going to have to redo it. She's done some work, and so we can set that up. She can continue doing work.
Right.
It just, there's a finish by date on there that would no longer be...
Yeah, right. The dates need to be changed. Right. Okay.
But she should be compensated for her...
And then we can, once we sort of move out those dates, we can approve it now, right? I mean, now, once it's changed.
Right. We'll get that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Next couple of weeks.
Yes, I think the most important thing is not going out to bid until you get close because bids are only good for 30 or 60 days, depending. So, as long as the architect knows what's up and what's going on, then...
We're almost done. Oh, oh, we do have banners left. Okay, so, we did mention the banners. There's two left?
No.
Okay, so, we did mention the banners during announcements and how nice they look. And the members of the 350th Committee here, Anna and Bob, are reminding me that there are banners left. So, if townspeople, a family, or someone who has a business or anything like that wants to sponsor them, it's $200, and you can reach out to Bobby Betzel, Anna Holehut, myself, Eddie Lesko, Lori Bane, anybody on the 350th, and there's Hatfield350.com is the website where you can get that information. And you could get, my family has one up, which is, makes us feel good. So, you can, you know, families can do that. It doesn't have to be just a business.
And they'll, so they're up now. Any new ones that come in will go up ASAP. We have them ready. We just need to customize them for the remainder that come in. They'll remain up along with the flags, the flags on the upside. Those will remain up through Veterans Day this year. Then, they'll come down for the winter, and then they'll go back up once the weather is nice in the spring, and those will remain up through 4th of July with the flags. Normally, the flags come down after 4th of July, but Jerry Clark said, you know, when the banners went up, he goes, I like the look of the flags and the banners. So, this year, we're going to leave them up all year until Veterans Day, so.
That's great.
But, yeah, so they'll go up and come down.
And then, at the end of all of that, you get to keep your banner. Right, you get to keep that. So, for $200, it's a nice way to support the Hatfield 350th. Rich, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Thanks, Bobby. Thanks, Anna.
Thank you. So, I'm assuming we're just going to table this to another...
Yeah, I don't...
He texted Kyle. He said he didn't know he was supposed to be here, so could he push it to him? He said he didn't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know. So, he said, "For next time."
Well, I understand he had communicated with him.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah.
So, the good news is Kyle will be coming to talk about the rates, the fee increase proposal, but I think he did mention in an email that the rates have not increased in a number of years, four or five years, I think, right?
I think he said since 2015.
So, in five years, the rates haven't gone up, just so we're aware.
Even the rates I'm looking at here are very reasonable.
They didn't, right, they didn't go crazy.
Nothing skyrocketing.
But it is nice to have, I think, the comparison of what they are currently.
Yeah, I would like to know what they...
Yeah.
Oh, sure. What the changes are.
Yeah. I think those current rates are available on the town's website, if I'm not mistaken.
Probably.
Right.
But I can send you the link.
It would just be easier to have it in front of me.
Yeah, because he can speak to it as to what the particular one is.
Okay, so that takes care of our agenda items. Was there anything else, Marlene or Ed, Brian, that you wanted to mention? No?
Not me.
Ed?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
A second.
Thank you, John.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, John.
Thanks, everybody.